Hello, I'm good.
Good evening, everyone. It's now six. I'd like to call the meeting to order. Would anyone like to make an a- motion to adopt the agenda?
I'll make a motion to adopt the agenda as is.
I will second.
All in favor? Ananimos. In regards to old business, would anyone like to make a motion to approve the minutes from the two eighteen twenty-five meeting?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes.
A second.
All in favor? In regards to new business, we have first on the agenda TA zero four two five. Um, I'd like to call to order the hearing for the text amendment TA zero four two five to modify the smoke shop tobacco stores and medical marijuana dispensaries definition and the definition of vape shop. Sean?
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Sean Dan. I'm the Planning and Zoning Commissioner or Planning and Zoning Administrator, excuse me, for the city of Villa Rica. And this particular item has been seen in front of you all a couple times, so. So, there was quite a few of, uh, vape shops, smoke shops, tobacco stores being proposed within the city over the last couple years and, um, based on that this staff had been directed to try to amend some verbiage within a city ordinance only because a couple of those shops were proposed to be specifically vape shops. And we do not have any of that verbiage within our city ordinance. So, um, along with trying to extend the proximities between sensitive groups as well as same uses, staff wanted to go ahead and amend the section eight point two-two, which is particularly pertaining to smoke shops, tobacco stores, vape shops, and medical marijuana dispensaries. Now, on eight point two-two subsection one, you do see now, um, all the added text is in green, all the stricken text will be taken out is in red. And on, uh, subsection one, there is a, some language that no properties with, within the central business district shall be rezoned and to allow smoke shops, tobacco stores, vape shops, and medical marijuana dispensaries only because these particular shops are only permitted inside C-two zones. So, let's say a business owner has a property within the CBD downtown area and they want to propose to rezone that particular property, go in front of city council, and if they do get that approval, then they have a permanent use, even though it's under a special exception, they can propose to have a smoke shop within those particular s- in, in that particular, uh, zoning district. So, adding this verbiage is going to prevent anybody trying to come in within the cities, sp- uh, specifically downtown and, um, requesting a rezoning for a smoke shop, tobacco store, or vape shop, or medical marijuana. Now, subsection two is regards to the proximities for sensitive groups in conjunction to vape shops, tobacco stores, and, um, smoke shops. So, currently, within the city ordinance, no vape shop can be within three hundred feet of a, uh, sensitive group. Now, what is a sensitive group? That is like a school, a family care, church, or a hospital. And, um, s- uh, s- the city staff is proposing to extend those, that proximity to fifteen hundred feet and as well as add urgent care hospitals into that section.
Hey, Sean?
Yes, ma'am.
Just a quick question. Should there be a comma after urgent care, so an urgent care center versus a hospital? Just clarifying.
Yes, ma'am. We'll go ahead and edit that. Thank you.
Okay. I know Kelly appreciates that at the end.
You know, I love a good grammar correction.
Now, also in subsection two B, there is some language pertaining to these particular uses and a same use, like two smoke shops in the same vicinity of each other. And currently, within the city of Villa Rica, none of these particular uses can be within five hundred feet from property line to property line from each other. And again, due to the influx of these proposed uses, and currently, we do have some of these smoke shops that are probably a couple hundred yards away from each other, uh, staff is proposing to extend that proximity and, uh, as well add some verbiage for vape shops, 'cause again, a lot of these new stores are going to be vape shop type, uh, smoke shops and not just, uh, a head shop or a tobacco store. Also, city staff did go ahead and add some verbiage pertaining to smoke shops again, and this is in relation to what is actually a smoke shop. So, that will mean any business whose principal product is in line with retail sales of alternative nicotine products. So, that's either a vape juice, a vape product of any sort. And we did add some type of verbiage regarding the, these particular uses can only be constituted as a vape shop if it has twenty-five percent or more business aggregate retail sales. Now, I'm already aware that we have discussed this in the future or in, in the past, and some commissioners did allude that that threshold might be too low. Again, this is a industry standard that what we've seen, uh, from other jurisdictions within the city of, or the state of Georgia. Now, if you all want to go ahead and increase that threshold, you can go ahead and direct staff and we can add that inside the planning report and propose that for next month's council meeting.
What was the amount that you had asked for? What percentage was it?
What's that?
Turn on your mic.
Well, I, I think one of the, th- there are still two things that I have issue with in this as it's written. The, the first one is still that we are regulating mer- medical marijuana dispensaries, um, in this section. Um, and I, I don't know if medical marijuana is legal in Georgia yet, but I do know that when, in states where they are, they're often dispensaries and medical practices in the same building with each other. And so, this would essentially prevent that from happening, right? If we have a medical practice where essentially somebody could apply for a medical marijuana card, in the case that like medical marijuana becomes codified in law in Georgia, then we would essentially prevent somebody from being able to get a medical marijuana card and like get, like go to a dispensary or something like that. And that plus the omission of like CBD shops, for instance, I think, um, has, it gives me pause. And I do think that that twenty-five percent, I just want to see the numbers because what I don't want is for there to be a lot of convenience stores that are included in that number because they do twenty-five percent of their business, uh, in va- like, I, I know some convenience stores that are primarily used as vape shops in this city. Um, and I would, I don't know if, if that's the intention of the, of the ordinance here is to include, uh, convenience stores that sell vapes inside this, this ordinance and have it be regulated by this ordinance. But I do think that that twenty-five percent threshold, I think like my colleague Andrew mentioned at the last time we discussed this, is going to be too low and it's going to, um, inadvertently put a lot of businesses that we don't necessarily want to regulate within the regulation rules of this ordinance.
Okay.
And I just don't know the numbers, right? I don't know how much business, I, aggr- percentage of aggregate business any of these, any of these stores are doing. And I don't know if we raised it to like fifty percent or some other threshold that if it would, uh, exclude certain vape shops that are definitely technically vape shops.
Right.
So, I don't n- I don't have the, the research numbers on that. Maybe, um, if I can punt it to you, Andrew.
Well, I don't have anything new except again, like she alluded to this loophole. I could sell twen- in the, I think my biggest problem is just the omission of CBD products, THC products. I think tobacco shops, when, when this type of ordinance was developed, this, it was probably in like the seventies when tobacco, look at the sales of tobacco since then. So, I can sell twenty percent tobacco, twenty percent CBD, twenty percent THC products. Um, and I'm not, I'm not meeting the threshold by any of them. And I, I, but I think that's what we're actually seeing in practice. That, the, the shops that are opening are doing that. That's, that's the breakdown of the, their offerings. So, I think without that, um, th- it's just insufficient. Like, to me, that's a big loophole. And then the, the distance is, i- we're, in one, one case, we're pointing to industry standard for the percentage of sales, but then we're ignoring the industry standard for the distance around, um, for example, I don't have the whole list. I gave it, it's on video. Um, I gave it the last time, but offhand Dallas is three hundred feet, for example. Uh, that's the only one I have today, but none of them were over a thousand. So, the, you know, I think, d- I can't remember if we proposed fifteen or twenty-five hundred last time.
Yes, sir. It was fifteen hundred.
Okay.
And the only reason we did, uh, propose that fifteen hundred proximity is because, um, from what the elected officials have alluded to in the past, it kind of seems like they don't have any appetite for these particular uses. So, instead of us actually taking that off our permanent uses and conditional uses chart.
Yeah.
This kind of meets in the middle.
I, so I get that, but i- it doesn't accomplish what they think it accomplishes because when you combine it with the low threshold for sales, you're, you're so, you're creating sort of a loophole. So, I, I don't think that non-specificity accomplishes keeping those away. I think specificity would do that. But that's just me.
So, do you think perhaps, Andrew, that, uh, suggested amendment might to, to the ordinance as it is written now would, would say fifty percent of aggregate sales, for instance, in alternative nicotine products, CBD, THC, or, like, encompass all of those things into a certain threshold?
I would ag-.
Do you see what I mean?
I would agree with that, but I don't, I don't think they want, I don't think that, um, I don't think the CBD THC language, I think that is a barrier.
Yeah. I think it would require more definitional language, too.
Yeah, well, I, I think like, I think that's, um, wasn't that a concern?
Yes, yes. It was one of the concerns that you brought up in the, the last meeting.
Not me. I, I, I meant from, um, like when that version was taken. I think you, uh, mentioned somebody, that, there was concern that by defining those.
So, you did garnish us some documentation to define, um, a medical marijuana dispensary as well as a THC.
Right.
And, uh, it, it kind of seems like the appetite of the elected officials, they didn't really want to get in the weeds too much with that type of language. Now, a- again, what they are proposing is to take these per- per- these permitted uses out of our zoning ordinance or leave them in there, but have them for, um, to be not in any of our districts, and that's commercial, C-two, uh, industrial, anything of that, but still have that language within our, our zoning ordinance.
Yeah, okay.
I think when you presented it to you, you said that Carrollton had done something similar, or maybe Kevin, you had said that Carrollton had done something similar to that second option?
Carrollton's banned it completely.
Via defining it as a, as a type of use and then omitting it from the potential.
From the use chart, yes.
This might be outside of the purview of, uh, questions that might be useful to answer for this, but how will this be enforced? Will people have to provide, if you sell vapes in the city, will you have to provide information to a code enforcement officer about the percentage of sales that are coming from all of your, all of your revenue streams, I guess?
So, not particularly to a code enforcement, uh, officer, only because, uh, I don't think that, and I have to double check, I, I wouldn't think that the code enforcement will have any type of language in their book to actually go inside a vape shop and then just scan and try to say, okay, this is about twenty-five, thirty percent of aggregate sales that you're using. That's not something that I don't think the city will garnish at this time. But, um, I, so when somebody does come in for a business license, they do have to give the city a proposed use, like what are they going to be using? And then also, we can ask for additional information, like, okay, out of all your aggregate sales, what percentage, what is your predicted percentage that you're going to be selling? So, okay, if you're going to use twenty-five percent of your sales to vape shops or nicotine products, go ahead and let us know. And then we can go ahead and have that on file, just in case if there is some rebuttal in the future. We already have, uh, really a, a, a form acknowledging that they were supposed to abide by those.
Yeah, I think because of that difficulty, so Decatur in May twenty-twenty-four, uh, made it based on, uh, what's being advertised or, or shelf. It's fifty percent of, uh, shelf space. Um, that's the guideline by what, just because it's more easily enforceable. And with that, they did, uh, size limitation, operating hour restriction, um, no drive-through service and stuff like that, but, um, it's just fifty percent of display, uh, display area.
That would take care of the convenience store possibility of being whipped in, too, if something happened and.
Yeah, right.
I don't, I don't think I've seen a convenience store that has more than fifty percent of their allocated advertisement display space be devoted to vapes.
Now, is Decatur suggesting just displayed, or is that in conjunction to aggregate sales?
Um, that, I, that, from what I can tell, they did not have a sales, like, there, there was nothing about sales, um, and it was proposed, uh, as an alternative to that because it was eas- easier to enforce.
I believe that's correct. You, you do one or the other. If you do it by sales, just like alcohol sales at restaurants have, you know, they have to sell fifty, fifty percent of their, sales have to be food sales. So, it's re- you require no self-reporting, which can't be manipulated, you know?
Yeah.
But I, I think that shelf space is a good idea.
Yeah, I agree.
So, would you all prefer to change our language instead of aggregate sales to display? Would that be something that you all would suggest?
Probably.
I would definitely be in favor of that more than other.
It's enforceable.
Yeah.
Yeah, as long as it's enforceable. Yeah, absolutely.
Now, in section thirteen point zero one, it does specify definitions within our city ordinance, and as you can see, under the V section, we do not have any verbiage or definitions pertaining to vape shops, vape juice, vape products, or, uh, any under that umbrella. So, city staff is proposing to add some language, some definitions for these particular uses. Now, again, this is, um, I would say industry standard on, based on some of the municipalities that we have seen within this, the state of Georgia. It's not a lot of them that really go into depth for vape shops. Again, this is something that is new. I think everybody around the state is trying to add within their city ordinances, but this is something that we can kind of, uh, see. And, um, I would say other cities have used and put inside their code. As well as you do see the blue text, which is the Commissioners' proposed text. And again, we did talk about this in a couple meetings ago, and the Commissioners did propose a definition for medical marijuana dispensaries, which, uh, staff did think that that would be very beneficial since we do not have one currently. And also, uh, in section, in section eight point two-two, it does highlight smoke shops, vape shops, tobacco stores, and medical marijuana dispensaries. So, this is, uh, some verbiage in, in a way of definition that can help, uh, staff be able to, I would say, direct the process. So, any establishment registered within the state of Georgia and licensed to dispense marijuana for medical use in accordance with the Georgia state law. So, any of these pr- these proposed uses have to go and, uh, get their licenses and get all their correct paperwork with the state first. Then they can come in within the city, and even when they do come in with the city and have all their paperwork and have all their approvals, they just still have to get a special exception permit from the city, which they'll have to fill out a application, uh, give the city staff the pertinent information, we compile it, a staff report, and then we would present it to you all, and then ultimately, the city council the following month will vote on that particular use. Now, this final slide is alluding to the permanent and conditional land uses, and this was the chart I was talking about, eh, that we have a section within our ordinance that has all the permanent uses within the city. And this highlights the smoke shop tobacco stores, medical marijuana dispensaries, as well as vape shops. And we did add these, these permanent uses within the city ordinance. Uh, the, the first one, the smoke shop tobacco stores is already currently in there, but vape shops was not. So, we went ahead and added, uh, these uses. But as you can see, for the zoning districts, they're only permitted within the C-two zone, and that is again, and by way of special exception permit. Thank you.
Does this require a public hearing?
Mm-hmm.
I now call to order a public hearing to, at this time, I open the meeting for public comment.
Can I ask a question real quick? So, that Commissioner text, just in the packet, I didn't see it. Should it be in the text amendment? Right after the, uh, definition of vape shops?
No, it should not. I added that on the eleventh hour only because, um, that, I did look through our definitions, and we don't have a definition for medical marijuana dispensaries. So, um, I wanted to go ahead and add that just because you all made a, a good, uh, comment in the past. So, we'll add that under the, of course, M section.
Okay.
Can I ask one more question?
Yes, ma'am.
Um, can you help me understand how, how medical marijuana dispensaries got folded into this, um, ordinance around vape shops?
Well, um.
It's already in the ordinance. It's been in the ordinance. So, this isn't something we, it's been added for your approval.
Okay.
And I can't tell you when it was added, because.
Yeah, it's in two D.
Before I started.
It's already in two D, Kelly.
I, I probably can't tell you that if I look at it, um.
At this time, we'll open for public comment. If you wish to speak, please come to the microphone, state your name, address for the record, and limit your time to three minutes.
It was added in August of twenty-two. I think that's when we did a big update to the entire section.
Yes.
Question. Is this public comment relative to this subject, right?
Yes.
All right. At this time, we'll close public comment. Would anyone like to make a motion? Are you okay with everything except for the inventory?
I'm not.
So, how about I make a motion to table this till the next meeting, 'cause it looks like we have more edits to do?
Sean, I think we have a moratorium right now. When does that moratorium expire?
Next month?
Yeah.
In May?
May.
So, we've got to get it done next month.
Be ideal.
This is probably the deadline for council to consider in May. Your next meeting would put it into the June, June council meeting.
Thank you.
Do you want a second? Lose his motion to table?
Yeah, I'll second.
All in favor of tabling until next month? Okay. Next on the agenda, we have RA zero one two five, ANX zero one two five, ANX zero two two five, the rezoning and annexation for Highway sixty-one's and South Van Wert, Avamoor PUD.
Good evening, Diana DeSanto, uh, interim city manager, city of Villa Rica. Um, and as you stated, this presentation is for the rezoning and annexation request, RA oh one dash two five, and ANX oh one dash two five, ANX oh two dash two five. Little background on this project. The applicant, um, seeks a rezoning and annexation for parcel identification numbers one six eight zero zero nine zero and one six nine zero one two zero Hickory Level Road and two six six four South Van Wert Road, as amended with a parcel split. The rezoning request is from Carroll County zoning designations of conservation and agricultural to a planned unit development. In twenty-eighteen, Avamoor Project at fifty-five and sixty-three Goldworth Road proposed development with a total of two hundred single-family units, three hundred multifamily units, senior housing, which included independent living, memory care, and a minimum age restriction of fifty-five years. In twenty-twenty, the applicant proposed a unit increase. The total number increased to two hundred and fifty single-family units and three hundred and twenty-five units of multifamily. In twenty-twenty-one, the city council approved an additional two hundred and ninety units of senior housing with a minimum age of fifty-five years. The applicant has returned each year to extend zoning approvals as specified in the original and subsequent conditions pla- placed on this conditionally, conditionally approved project. In September of twenty-twenty-four, the applicant filed an extension to the previously approved PUD. They sought to extend and alter the PUD to include light industrial I-one. The application was denied by Planning and Zoning Commission. The applicant was instructed to file a new application to effectively remove the previously approved housing units and mixed-use components. The proposed PUD would change then to a use of industrial medium-density I-two. Applicant withdrew the application and filed a new application. The applicant filed a rezoning application, R-six dash two four, and two requests for annexation oh one and oh two two four from Carroll County Agricultural and Conservation Use to PUD to include additional permitted uses that at the time were being considered simultaneously with a text amendment for a technology park overlay district. In January of this year, council approved the technology park overlay district. This picture is of the annexation request for property owner, owner was Tolbert, the address of two six six four South Van Wert Road. This parcel annexation as amended is one hundred and eighty-two point four six acres. It was previously looked at for two hundred and four point five three acres, and this is parcel ID one six nine zero one two zero. There's a portion of the property towards the edge that contains a resident, residents that will remain within Carroll County. This is the other parcel being considered for annexation. This is off of Hickory Level Road. The total acreage is thirty-two point oh six acres, and this is parcel identification number one six eight zero zero nine zero. So, as we consider this proposal, some information about the current conditions of the property. Um, currently, the property lacks a current use. The property character is typical of vacant undeveloped lots surrounded by agricultural properties. From our comprehensive plan, we look at the future land use plan, which prescribed this parcel, the Avamoor parcel, as a suburban village. This creates nodes in areas where prudent, where potential for future development exists, establishes development patterns focused on clustered commercial development around the intersection of prominent roads or community crossroads, and includes immediate surrounding residential areas which are suburban in nature. Looking at this as the most desirable use for which the land in each district. Looking at this as the most desirable use for which the land in each district is adapted. Unlike the current vacant use of the property, the proposed rezoning and development is more desirable, is the most desirable use based on comprehensive plan and the overall character of the area. Proposed technological development along the Highway 61 corridor is the most desirable, being the least impactful on schools and traffic. And rezoning to PUD would give the parcel an economic advantage by providing further develop, future development. However, any increases to utility demand could potentially cause disruption, challenges in the area. As far as responsible development and growth, the southwest portion of the city is expected to grow with residential and commercial uses in the future. The applicant has not indicated any roadway improvements on any previously submitted concept plans for the PUD. Excessive usage of city infrastructure could be possible. However, in this area, water is provided by the county, not the city, portions of the area, I'll asterisk that. Sewer capacity and conveyance would have to be agreed upon in the form of a development agreement. Proposed Avamoor development component shares geographical, shares geographical characteristic as the city's existing industrial areas, bedding residential and commercial properties. So our northeast industrial park on Highway 101 abuts agricultural and residential uses to the south and borders unincorporated Carroll County to the north. Our east industrial park in Douglas County abuts I20 exit 26, commercial properties to the west, residential subdivision Merrill Lake to the northeast, and unincorporated Douglas County to the east and southeast. And here's kind of a picture of that description, the gray area being our industrial parks. Um, and then green, as noted, being agricultural, blue residential. And, um, current parcel for Avamoor is the blue, um, towards the southwest portion of the map. So we've kind of just tried to show in what a picture of Technology Park Overlay District would look like on the zoning map with the annexation added to the previously blue Avamoor parcel. And it would look like this. As far as staff's recommendations on the project, the staff recommends approval. And the reasons are based on the city's comprehensive plan, development patterns, and social economic development. The applicant's request to rezone the parcel from PUD to PUD Industrial with the Technology Park Overlay District is supported. A Technology Park Overlay District will provide the highest and best use of the land without overburdening city schools, roads, and infrastructure. The rezoning facilitates the transformation of a vacant, underutilized parcel into a valuable asset for the city while promoting opportunities for additional development along the Highway 61 corridor. No objections were received from Carroll County. Some conditions we would like to consider. Water utilization, sewer capacity, and conveyance are to be agreed upon with the city in the form of a development agreement. That the residential components of the PUD must be removed and all affected properties must adhere to the Technology Park Overlay District development standards and permitted uses. And that a minimum 100-foot buffer yard shall separate subject properties from all residential zoning districts. And I have some, um, specifics from the comprehensive plan, just to tie back to the project, um, that was in the, um, planning report. Um, so some of those, as it relates to social and economic development, which create employment opportunities within the city and expand business diversity. SCD Strategy 3.2, promote high-quality employment centers, such as industrial, commercial, office, and gateway, through enforcing development regulations related to building and site design and buffer and landscaping requirements in accordance with the Future Development Guide. Social and Economic Development Strategy 3.3, identify and promote opportunities for higher-paying jobs and small business. Strategy 3.4, identify opportunities to accommodate expansion of industrial real estate, including infill development where appropriately located. Strategy 3.5, pursuing annexation opportunities within a general urban growth area as depicted on the future development map based on determination of economic feasibility and benefit. Some of the development patterns that are also supported by the comprehensive plan include, um, goal number one, maintaining small-town character and cultural identity while supporting growth. And this, um, development pattern strategy 1.2 ensures non-residential development in village areas indicated on the future development map are compatible with existing character and scale of the surrounding area. And goal six, to promote quality corridor development. That strategy is to evaluate need and develop design standards of corridor development that helps mitigate traffic mobility issues in high-traffic areas and to ensure that new development or redevelopment is designed to be compatible with the functions of the corridors. So those are just a few of the elements, again, from the comprehensive plan that support our reason for approval. As far as the, um, the Avamoor PUD, um, previously, believe in 2018, when it was approved, the original 200 units, there was a development of regional impact completed at that time. Um, the comments received from Three Rivers, um, had to deal with a, um, historic family farm on the property. Those were the only comments received at that time. Um, currently, Three Rivers is reviewing this project. The DRI was submitted Friday. Um, so this will be, this item will be heard by council on May 13th for a vote, uh, which will be after that 30-day review period and comments are received. So it'll be included in that report delivered on May 13th. Any questions for me before I turn it over to the applicant? Oh, yeah. Also, thank you so much. Um, when this was received, it was, um, brought to Joint Review Committee. Um, that committee was established as a part of the, um, TAD with representatives of Carroll County, Carroll County Schools, and City of Villareca. Uh, we, uh, went over this application at our, um, March, um, Joint Review Meeting, and it received favorable support by the members of the Joint Review Committee.
Did we have a flood plan analysis conducted?
Not for the, not for this project, no.
Okay.
We, we have not received a site plan at this time.
Okay. Would, would one be done at that time?
Yes.
Okay.
At what time? Sorry.
Prior to, prior to permitting, when, when a site plan is reviewed, um, all, all of the related hydrology would be reviewed at that time.
The council won't have a site plan either?
Um, by May 13th now.
Um, one of the questions I had in the original, um, application, there was no mention of roadway infrastructure. Now, when we consider that annexation on Van Wert and Hickory Level, um, will there be conditions put in place to build upon that infrastructure? Just because I don't see the heavy traffic if it's, if you need tractor-trailers or construction movement going through down those two roadways.
In terms of a, are, are, I guess.
Like widening the roadway?
We would need to request from them a traffic study to, to ensure that that would be a requirement as a condition. Um, we have not requested a traffic study at this time.
Do you know where they would access the property?
There would be access points, I believe, along Hickory Level as well as 61. Um, but again, without a, a site plan, I can't tell you exactly where it would be accessed from.
Another question I had was, um, when we looked at the technology overlay district, one of the uses was a data center. And there were certainly concerns from the community from a noise standpoint. When I went through the planning report, um, one of the things it cited was that they would have to adhere to the city ordinance in terms of, I believe it was 50 decibels within 75 feet. So I just want to point out then that your condition of 100 feet would then eliminate that noise concern for the residents um, in proximity of this project, correct?
The, the buffer should help with their concerns. Um, but there was actually additional conditions put in the Technology Park Overlay District about when generators can even run, which I don't believe was a part of our original noise ordinance.
Okay. That's helpful. Thank you.
You're welcome.
And it's a 100-foot buffer?
Yes, ma'am.
Is it typical for these types of requests? Forgive me, I am new to this commission. Is it typical for these types of requests to come before planning and zoning and to come before council with no, uh, impact survey on water and sewer usage, with no environmental impact study, with no traffic analysis impact study, with no, um, no site plan visible to either planning and zoning or city council?
I would, I would say no, that's not typical.
Thank you.
It could be typical if they're just asking for annexation and rezoning. Because they're, they're just asking. So that would not be in and of itself unusual.
In, in other jurisdictions, it is looked at differently than I've experienced in, in Villareca. In, in, in prior jurisdictions that I've worked, when it's looked at as a, a zoning, it is looked at on the merits of the zoning. Not necessarily what the exact end product will be. A lot of times it's unknown, as in this case, in terms of the, it just creates a, a marketable asset for the applicant.
It's pretty, you'll see, if you're here a while, you'll see applications where an owner of property wants rezoning so they can market it certain ways. And they don't, they don't know what's going to be on their property, but they need the zoning in order to market it to certain mark, you know, certain potential end users. Hear from the applicant.
Yes. Any other questions?
I'm good.
Good evening. I am Brandon Bowen. I practice at 15 South Public Square, Cartersville, Georgia. I'm a zoning lawyer, a lawyer. I represent Avamoor and Atlas Development, who is the developer in this case. Uh, thank you for having us here today. Um, so.
Excuse me, just for clarification, is Atlas Development the same as Embry Development?
No, it's a different entity.
Okay. Got it.
Um, Atlas Development is the, is the developer.
Got it.
Project. And this is a data center project. It's been before you before. It's the same project. Um, but we're, we're back. Do I need to be louder? I don't want to yell at anybody. So thank you to Mr. Santa for giving a very thorough introduction. That will make my job a whole lot easier. Um, to tell you a little bit about who I am, you know, I told you I'm a zoning lawyer in Cartersville. About three years ago, I had somebody walk into my office and say, hey, we want to do a data center in Cartersville. And, uh, I said, well, there's two things. They showed me a picture of what they were, where they were looking. I said, there's two things. One, you have to know what a data center is because I have no idea. I didn't. And two, I'm looking at this drawing or this overhead aerial of where they're looking to do it, and my house was on it. Um, I was just a few hundred yards from the site. So I had to convince myself that this was a good thing for my community and my neighborhood because my neighborhood butts up to this site, and in fact, I can look out my bedroom window now and see the site. So, um, I was able to do that because I think data centers are a fantastic thing to bring to our communities. That case is kind of similar to this case because we, what we had there is a property that had been approved for a lot of homes. Uh, in that case, it was about 2,000 homes, um, but it had set undeveloped for a while. And people kept looking at it, but no one was moving forward. And this, uh, data center company bought it, got it zoned, um, and, and have moved forward with it. Why is that a good thing? Data centers generate virtually no traffic. You know, they're kind of a hybrid thing in that if you look at a data center, you're looking at a big building. It looks like a warehouse. It is a warehouse. It's a big building to store servers in. You know, we hear people talk about the cloud, right? All my data's in the cloud. All this AI that's moving, uh, this being created is in the cloud. The cloud is a euphemism. It's not a cloud. It's in a cer, it's in a warehouse somewhere, okay, and servers and walls of servers. That's where all of this data is. And so, um, so it is a warehouse. It's a big warehouse-looking thing. But it's not like warehouses we're used to. We're used to warehouses that people move products in and out, distribution with tractor-trailers. That's not the case with warehouses, with, with the data centers. They have virtually no traffic. They don't generate a lot of employees. They have some employees, but they are generally a few technically-minded folks and some security folks to make sure that, um, the property stays secure, safe. So not many jobs. There tend to be high-paying jobs, but not a lot of them. So they don't generate much traffic. And if you compare that to a property that already is approved for hundreds and hundreds of homes, the traffic impact of a data center is much less, much, much less than what you would see. The other thing I had to deal with on that case is noise. Because if you get on your phone and Google data center, you will see horror stories about data centers and all the noise they make. And it may have been true, when this industry got started, you'll see a place up in Virginia called Loudoun County, where it seems to have gotten started and it seems to have been a problem. It may be true that those data centers are loud. It is not true that modern data centers that are created now are loud. There are numerous data centers within, um, you know, a handful of miles of here that you can go park right outside and not hear a single thing. They're just, if, if someone tells you data centers are loud, it's just not true. It's not true. And I would invite you, I mean, we could arrange to give you a location to go to if you've never been to one. Um, that would be easy. So it's a great thing for the community, and it's particularly a great thing for the city because it generates a tremendous amount of revenue. You get revenue in the form of real estate, ad valorem taxes on the buildings. You get money in the form of personal property taxes because they're full of servers. And those servers wear out. They have to be replaced every three to five years. And every time they do, they're just, that's just personal property taxes. But the biggest way that cities make money is through franchise fees. And, um, you know, I'll let your administration calculate what those fees are, but I guarantee you, if we all guessed how much it would be, we'd all be too low. So that's why data center is good here. We're happy to answer any questions and we appreciate your, um, consideration. We appreciate your staff's consideration of this. We agree with the comments that were made. We are agreeable to the conditions that are proposed. And that said, I'll be happy to try to answer any question that you have.
One of the concerns that residents had was water usage. Can you, um, provide some context and elaborate on how these data centers utilize water? Um, what the initial load is, what the ongoing load is?
Sure. So how much water would be used, I can't tell you today. You asked the question, has there been a flood study? There, there has not, to my knowledge, been a flood study. That, there will be a tremendous amount of engineering on the site before we're at a point where we can really talk about a site plan. I mean, I could, we could draw up a concept plan to show you, but whether or not it would be accurate is, you know, there's just, there's just too many moving parts in the engineering and the geo, technical, hydraulic, and whatnot. So because of that, I can't tell you how many buildings would go out there, and if I can't tell you that, I can't tell you how much water. Also, there are multiple technologies that can be used. Um, and, you know, depending on which technology used will determine how much water. Right now, the most efficient technologies from a power standpoint use a lot of water. And it's a lot of water. It's an awful lot of water. But, um, that's something that we have to address. And, you know, once we reach the conclusion of what the right method is for this property, then we'd have to work with the city in a development agreement to make sure that all those, that the city can or the county can provide the utilities necessary. This is, we can't force it. You know, it's, I mean, the city is going to have to, or the county's going to have to agree to provide the utilities. And we'll have to work with them. The good news is that these projects are well-funded. And if improvements need to be made in order for service to happen, that's usually very doable. And that's something we would certainly work out with the, uh, city administration when we got to that point. we would certainly work out with the city administration when we got to that point. The other thing to think about is it's not an instant load ramp. You know, if you approve this, there will not be a data center there next week. This is a project that would take years to develop out, I would expect. And because of that, there's time to plan for all these things. We know we're not going to bring the next building or two on until we have done what we've got to do to make sure all of the infrastructure and utilities are there.
Can you elaborate more on the years of, of actual development that would happen? Like, are you looking at a five-year project, a 10-year project?
It's hard for me to answer that, because I don't know at this point how many buildings would be there, but I would think, you know, five to 10 years is, is the range. You know, probably starting with the first buildings, the next couple of years, and then working out, you know, through the build-out phase.
Can you contrast that with the potential timeline for development for the residential project that has already been approved?
Well, I presume that could be started today, but I'm not real familiar with, with the residential component, other than to say, I think, you know, this is intended to replace and remove the residential component.
I think the developer originally had, for the original Avamoor, already had his LDP, Land Disturbance Permit, so he could have started, had bulldozers going already.
Yeah, there was silt fencing already up, right? I don't have any more questions, do you?
Do I have any?
Yes.
Maybe just for Kevin. That, we would, we would need water from Carroll County, right?
Yeah, I think that would, that's right. I think, I think Carroll County would probably provide the water. And, and like you said, it would be dependent on them having the capacity to do it.
Yeah, do we have an idea of cost?
I don't. It costs to provide the water to them?
Right.
No. Matt, Matt Wyndham, the Carroll County Water Authority, would be the person to answer that.
Would you mind if I interject with a follow-up?
What was that, Kelly? We couldn't hear you.
I, I just want to interject what Andrew was saying with the follow-up, which is, would that, would the purchase of water from Carroll County be the eventual development's responsibility, or that wouldn't have, would, would the city of Villarica be purchasing that water from Carroll County to be, then be used?
Villarica will not be providing the water for this project.
But we will be providing the sewer infrastructure?
Yes, through a development agreement. We would expect the developer to contribute to that.
So, question for the developer representative here. Is there a, so, I've, I've done a, a good bit of research on data centers, and I agree with you. One of the things that you mentioned was that a lot of water is the most environmentally friendly way to power and cool these data centers. So, is there a part of the site plan, I know you're not trying to talk too far out into the future, is there a, is there a kind of gray water infrastructure plan in place for this place, so that we are not, like, continuing to deplete resources?
Yeah, so, that's a great question, and I appreciate your research. Yes, gray water can be used as part of it, and it is desirable to do so, because it makes use of something that you otherwise wouldn't use, and it's cheaper. So, I mean, it, it's a smart way to do it. It's just a matter of doing the engineering and figuring out what is the best for this particular site, but that's certainly something we would look at.
Thank you.
Thank you.
At this time, we're going to open for public comment. We're going to ask that those in favor and opposed, each side will have 10 minutes. So, I'm not sure if you want to have a spokesperson for each side, or if you would just like to come up and speak briefly. If anyone's in favor and would like to come up and speak, please state your name and address and limit your comments. Yes?
Can you come up to the podium, though, because there's online watchers?
This isn't, this isn't part of my three minutes. My name is Paul Cutler, okay? As controversial as this is, why only 10 minutes? I mean, we've been listening to this for, you know, a good 30 minutes. I've got a lot of questions. I'm not going to ask y'all questions, but why 10 minutes?
Kevin?
There's four people that I know of that signed up for it. 10 minutes is pretty limited, in all respect of this. We have three minutes each. I mean, I've been hearing this gentleman speak for the last five or six minutes. Can we do that?
The, the rules for public hearings allow for 10 minutes each side. The Sony Procedures Act for the State of Georgia requires equal time for both sides, so that, that's where that comes from. It's pretty, it's usually pretty obvious in, in these type of hearings, one way or the other, when we have a lot of people for or against. You know, we usually don't need hours to get the message.
Sure. I just feel like we're not being heard. Yet, the pitch is on to do it, but we're not being heard, so let's figure it out from there.
I met with people this week about this project. I'm accessible. I'm easy to find online. I'll meet with you anytime I'm not working, so I, I don't understand.
So, first, we're going to ask for those in favor, if they'd like to come speak.
Those in favor of the project can come up to the podium at this time.
Now, we'll ask those opposed and each side, and so, those opposed will have 10 minutes total, so.
Good evening. Well, here we are. I'm still trying to figure out what we're doing here.
Can you please state your name and address?
Dan Prissner, 2377 South Van Wert Road, Villarica, Georgia. I'm not sure why we're here. This has already been brought to you folks in December. It was already brought to the city council in January. It was passed and approved and in place. Tons of defects, tons of violations of laws, and it is now in litigation. A lawsuit has been filed about this. It has not been vacated. It has not been thrown out. It has not been nullified in any way, shape, or form, so I'm not sure how you can vote on something that's already been voted on and passed. It is in place. Until a judge walks in and says, we're going to vacate this whole thing, then you guys can start all over again. Now, the city's answers to the lawsuit was deny, 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 on every single page. However, all their actions since then indicates that maybe it wasn't all that deny, 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 because they've done all sorts of things, and they've done all this to try to make a change, I guess, again. So, here's my question. If the city's stance is just fixing defects from the one that's already been passed and in place, and you can't vote on something that's already been done until it's out of there, here's my question. If they're trying to fix defects, that is not going to fly. You can't just go back with flagrant violations. First of all, this is a different applicant than last time. Last time, it was Embry. This time, it's Avamoor. So, you're now trying to go back and take the things you did right with Embry and transfer them, transfer them over to Avamoor, and then fix all those defects? And again, this has not been thrown out by a judge. This is still in place. Third, if it is the city's stance that they're just going to deal with a new applicant, Avamoor, and they want to rezone it, well, I'm not a lawyer. I don't play one on TV, but I can read. If they want to rezone this again, good luck. They got a big problem. Once a property has been rezoned, it cannot be applied for rezoning again for 12 months. So, if that is their stance, we'll see you next January. So, let's go through. One more time, reviewing. There's a lawsuit. They can't throw it out. If it's a different applicant, so you can't use the old stuff for the new stuff, you've got to start all over. Number three, if you're attempting to rezone it, 12-month waiting period.
Thank you very much. My name is Paul Cutler. I live at 27 Hickory Glen here in Villarica. Few things. Mark Twain said there's three kinds of lies: bold-faced lies, white lies, and statistics. I'd like to add that to that sins of omission. When I look at applications, when I look at planning reports, there's a lot of stuff left out here. Data centers, million gallons a day. A million gallons in, a million gallons out. Where's it going to go? To the sewer. Who's going to get the permits to get over I-20, Highway 78, the railroad, the gas pipeline? Or is it going to go down to Carroll County? What's it going to do? Who's going to pay for that? Once again, a million gallons in, a million gallons out. Now, for the sins of omission, I see different things. Let's talk about wetlands very quickly. That is a floodplain, right there, plain and simple. I gave this to Sean, I think you've got a copy of that, Sean, because I filled an opposition letter with 50 signatures to it, okay? I sent the EPA a letter back in March, okay? I looked at the topographical, and this thing is pretty much cut up. Doesn't take an engineer to figure this out right here. It is cut up right there. That's your wetlands right there, folks. So, it's slicing and dicing. Now, you could say, oh, we've got firmware software. We know where the floodplains are. Well, Google it. The firmware software does not equate to wetlands, okay? You know what the floodplain is, but you don't know what the wetlands are, okay? So, that's pretty much it. One other thing. Somebody alluded to traffic study, and I took a picture of a bunch of school buses coming out on South Van Wert. This thing is not going to build itself, okay? It doesn't just grow like a mushroom out of the ground. It's going to be flatbed trailers, concrete trucks, what, seven years, eight years? Is that, what it is? 70 years, eight years? Yep. But there is a picture of the school buses backed up. This, right here, is Rocky Branch Road coming on to South Van Wert, right here, okay? Once again, this thing is not a mushroom coming out of the ground. You can have that right there, Sean. Part of the study, right there. You're going to have these school buses with kids competing with cement trucks, tractor-trailers, bulldozers, and everything else. And when you look at that picture on South Van Wert, it's only six wheels. That's all you got on that road. There's a reason for that. That's all I've got.
Thank you.
My name is Brad Hartley. I live at 2367 South Van Wert Road and have for the past 50 years. And what I don't want to do is walk out and look across the street and see a big warehouse staring me in the face. The thing said that everything surrounding it was agricultural, it's not. Everything surrounding it on South Van Wert Road is residential. The thing I would ask is, would you like to have this come out of your house and look across the street and see an industrial area? I don't think so. And in terms of water usage, you say, well, I don't know what the water usage would be. Well, there are other data centers, and so I'm sure that they have a good idea of how much water is going to be required. They just don't want to say so.
Jennifer Ingham, 34, Hickory Glen. I just wrote a couple of things down real quick as I was listening to the lawyer speak. And what I want you guys to consider is if you pass this, you're giving them a blank check to do whatever they want. They don't have a site plan, so you're just writing them a blank check. There have been power outages multiple in this area. I've lived in this area for like 20 years. We've had to buy a backup generator, so we don't lose groceries, stuff like that. The lawyer mentioned revenue from employees, but he also said you're going to have minimal employees, so that's contradicting. The water in the sewage, you're assuming Carroll County's going to do it, and you're assuming the developer's going to do it. Kind of probably need to finalize that. Traffic, he pointed that out. The buses can't even turn at the intersection of Hickory Level and Van Wert without the traffic stopping 50 yards before the stop sign to let the buses turn. And the residential project that was going to go there, I know there were some issues with the sewage and water, and that's why it wasn't developed.
Good evening. Brian Hartley, 1016 Dean Drive. Thank you all for your time. I'll be brief. As best I can gather, there is no adjoining neighborhood of these properties that support it. In fact, no one stood up and supported at all from the entire community. And I, I'm not going to say I'm an anti-data center person or anything like that. I just think on something of this scope and this size, it behooves you all to take your time and do your due diligence and not rush to a decision. With nobody in support, with the immediate neighbors not in support, I, I just, I just don't see how you can support something like this until more information comes forward, and you have all these people standing up saying, we're here to support it. We think it's good for Villarica. We think it's good for Carroll County. We think it's good for West Georgia. Until the developers are able to come to you with that, I just don't know that this makes sense to move forward. Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, we'll end public hearing. Does anyone have any additional questions for Sean? I'm sorry, not Sean, dying.
What, what is our, our timeline on this? The, we're, it's pretty much today, right? Okay. I just, I have, I think, I think, like, a lot of my concerns, I think some of what we heard can be addressed, but I, like, I, I sense a sort of, the, the concerns that I brought up a couple of months ago related to the overlay, and the language in the overlay, and the potential for ambiguity between the overlay and the, the ordinance. I think that combining that, I, I wish, I guess what I'm saying is I wish that we had time to look at the overlay. I wish we had more than just today. You know, I think if that read differently in a few places, I think I would, I would be a little more comfortable than I am.
I feel like we, if there's something specific, you could make it a condition. I would say if there was something specific, you could make it a condition.
So, I, I have a couple of comments. So, when we, this was first brought to us, there were two parcels. We've come back now, and now there are seven parcels. And I, wasn't there two? Was two before?
So, so there's only ever been two considered for annexation.
Okay.
The, the Avamoor piece, as it stood prior, was multiple parcels.
Okay.
So, that didn't?
That didn't change.
It didn't change. I, I hear what you're saying, but it didn't change. There's only two parcels being considered for annexation.
Right. In terms of growth, growth is going to come to this community whether we want it to or not. We live on I-20, and we've got to make good decisions for that growth. We heard in previous meetings, the school system talk about a lack of infrastructure for schooling, children. And if we just kick this thing down the can, this just may end up being broken parcels of broken developments of more residential, which we could get more little spots of townhomes, apartments, like we have over in Ward 1, next to the new Publix, or over on Hickory Level. River Trace, is it? There's new townhomes there. I just drove past. So, what we are here- So what we are here to consider is 900-plus homes, or the option to market this for a potential to go through various oversights through our ordinances, our permitting, our rules, regulations, to ensure that a good plan can be developed that would potentially bring a significant amount of revenue to our growing city, which desperately needs infrastructure in sewage, in utilities, electrical, right? Carroll EMC is actually right there. That's the decision we have before us, correct?
That is correct.
I agree with all that. I would just say, I would be cautious in, we're looking to the future of the schools and saying like, this is, or the implication is, this is not solvable. And we're looking at some of these other problems, and we're saying, oh, that will come with time. It seems like sort of, just from a logical perspective, it's kind of a double standard, it seems like. I think, I think we should give equal attention to the problems that arise, based on their magnitude, not based on whether they would lead to approval or not. Just a thought. I'm just thinking. I think out loud a lot.
Any questions, or would you all like to make a motion?
Am I allowed to also make a comment, too? I think, I agree with you that, you know, development is going to happen in this city, and it's up to us to kind of try to figure out what the best kind of development is for our community and for our citizens. And one of the things that has given me a lot of pause is the slow-moving timeline for the Avamoor development as originally opposed as a PUD, originally approved in 2018. There's fencing. There's still no development there, perhaps because this project was already in the works or in talks before then. And every time I've talked with a developer about this, prior to even being appointed to the role on this commission, I've gotten really ambiguous answers about what the ultimate goal is. And that even comes from the, the original project that was approved, like you were saying, Louz, about the original parcels of land that were supposed to be included, and then now this new application, too. And so that gives me a lot of pause, and I have, I have a lot of questions about, about the project as it stands, and about where the next step will go, based on the kind of ambiguity that I've seen in this project as it's moved along.
I think Kevin can answer that.
Well, I don't know, I mean, I can't see into the future either. So what I do know is that one big win for the city, if this is approved, is an agreement to take 865 houses off the table. Whether they get their funding, or they get their in-user and develop a data center or not...
If the property's undeveloped, if Carroll County won't give them the water if they can't...
Yeah. If that doesn't happen...
Then they can't do, they still can't be approved.
And we've got an agreement that they're not going to build 865 houses? We've got to win.
And they have to be aware of the floodplains. They can't build on those.
Right. They have to go through all those environmental measures and hoops.
And you know what? One issue that, that's important for this committee, and from a planning perspective, you see these large tracts of land that are adjacent to the city. You know, in the county, they can only build a house on, they have to have four acres. So they want to annex into the city to develop a ton of houses where they couldn't do that in the county. So that's, that's one thing to always be, you know, weary of and conscious of. So from that perspective, this, this really helps the city. You know, we see this as a better project than a big subdivision that we cannot provide. We would be providing the water. We would be providing the sewer, and we can't do that.
And I don't know which developer you were talking to originally, but I don't, I think that it was sold. Is that right?
I'm sorry?
The, a developer that originally started the Avamoor, it was, it's sold, right?
Right. I think the...
No, this wasn't a number of years ago. This was...
I think until, until like last year, the, the person that owned the property just never had the funding to develop it.
Yeah. Yeah, there wasn't funding from the previous developer.
I don't think that's the issue now.
Right.
Did that help answer? No.
I appreciate your response, yeah.
Yeah. These projects cost a lot of money, and I think the previous developer just was never able to get the funding together to get it off the ground.
And also what we're looking at, too, is that essentially, like, planning and zoning, our vote, regardless of how we vote here, this is going to go in front of City Council.
That's right. You're, you're actually not voting to approve or deny anything. You're just making a recommendation that it be approved, or a recommendation that it be denied, or approved with conditions.
I have a question. Okay. So say that we wanted to, for this project, increase the buffer, like the wooded buffer where residential area is, where the residential area is. Would we need to put that as a condition now? Or will that go before us again when they have a site plan? No.
You, I mean, you, if you wanted to do that now, that would be, you know, there'd be a motion to approve with conditions X, Y, and Z.
It's currently at 100-foot buffer, a tree buffer.
And that's increased from the original, correct? It was 75?
And planning and zoning will have an opportunity to weigh in once there is a site plan, once these environmental studies have been approved, or have been submitted, once the traffic and water studies have been submitted?
Not, depends on what depends. If, if they're having to get variances, like if, if they wanted less than our code required for buffers or other things, then it would be revisited. If their zoning is approved, then they can build what's allowed in their zoning.
Meaning we would have to change the condition now, right? So some of the research I did on data centers that, from the past, caused noise, recommended, there were three examples I found that recommended anywhere from 200 to 300 feet of buffer space in order to minimize the potential impact.
But that would only be like, what, the residential, where residential borders...
Right. Where it would border residential. And then the other piece that they discussed was also, which I think the ordinance already covers, which is the decibels and the number of feet that that can reach out.
It was 50?
50 decibels, I believe, based on the ordinance I saw in munacy code.
It, it is for residential. It does depend on what the adjoining property type is.
Right.
It does change from there, yeah. And then the Technology Park Overlay District specifically talks about generator use in addition to the noise standards.
Yeah, it was like 7:00 AM to...
5:00 PM, and otherwise emergency use only.
That was only for testing.
Correct.
Is agriculture and residential use the same?
Can you come up to the mic? Because this is being recorded, so folks want to hear what you have to say.
Just a point of clarification for me. When you say residential, a lot, I think some of these adjoining properties are actually zoned agriculture. So is residential and agriculture use considered the same to the city of Villarica?
Do you remember if it's county versus city? I think that's another answer to the question.
The adjoining parcels in the county may be agricultural. I don't think there are any agricultural properties in the city that would adjoin this parcel.
Vplex.
Vplex, which is about it, is the closest thing.
So for residents that live in the county and adjoin the proposal, would the buffer for residential apply if they're in the county and it's zoned in something that the city doesn't offer? The zoning type the city doesn't offer?
If we were to put the conditions, let me rephrase, I think, that question in a different way. If we were to impose conditions where the data center buildings themselves would have to have a 200-foot buffer from any residential property, and then any noise-emitting generators' equipment were 300 feet, or had to be screened within the building itself, would that cover the entire border of the property, whether it was zoned county or city?
I don't think county addresses that.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think any do, but I think they're all city, but based on the map.
Right. I, I mean, you can put, you can recommend any conditions you want. I mean, you could recommend a 10,000-foot buffer.
Yeah.
Of course, that would...
Doesn't mean council has to vote for it, right?
I would probably hear from their lawyers on something like that, but, but no, I think the concern we just heard was his, you know, there's properties that are, people live on, but they're not zoned residential, they're, they're zoned agricultural. So I, I mean, I think you could address that, that the...
Put in the condition.
If you're wanting a, a bigger buffer close to where people live, I mean, you could stay on parcels that have a residence on them, something like that. Not, not necessarily the zoning, but a parcel that has...
Right.
A residence.
Or what about just defining it from the property line?
Yeah, but if you've got a highway on one side, I think that's one thing they're saying.
Yeah. That would be too difficult, the highway.
Do you need that special buffer if there's a highway?
Yeah. No, probably not.
How long would it be? Am I able to request a condition in the form of an amendment to the overlay?
They're not considering overlay today.
We're not...
Not, yeah, I mean, you can add conditions to this application, but the overlay has already been approved. Yeah, I mean, you, you guys can always recommend text amendments. It would just go through that process. We would need to advertise that separately and go through that process. But you can't, I mean, you can't tonight, but you can.
What's your condition?
So are we able to make it property-specific, or it has to be this development-specific? If, if we request a condition, can it apply to the property as opposed to limited to this
Your condition would be on this application, so...
Right.
If that makes sense.
Okay.
I mean, they're asking for an annexation and a rezoning, so the conditions you put would be upon the appro, those conditions would be part of that approval, if council accepts it.
Okay.
What is the maximum height of buildings that can be in that?
65.
65, and I think we determined that was like four at max, five stories, so shorter than the region's building in downtown. I'm going to attempt to make this motion, but I'm going to preface it with, there are pros and cons on both sides of this issue. I have clearly heard what citizens that showed up here today. I've also done my own research and solicited feedback from folks that aren't here, just to get opinions and other communities. But at the end, we need to make a recommendation that would be in the best interest of the city and its development. So I'm going to propose to make a motion to approve the annexation with conditions that there is a 200-foot buffer from any residential property or property that contains a residence on the parcel, in addition to the three conditions that Deanna had already put from the city that were presented in her presentation.
Could I, could we add a condition?
Sure.
To all structures at plus two, the base, base flood elevation, plus two feet? The, the typical is plus one foot.
Do you want to make that part of your motion? Because it's your motion.
Yes. So we will add the condition of plus two feet above floodplain?
She's asking if you were, if she was...
If I, I wanted to make sure I stated it properly.
Yes, yes. Structures at, it would be two feet above the, the base flood elevation is an elevation identified to be 1% risk of flooding in the next timeframe, whatever that is, over, so this would raise it from one foot to two feet.
To two feet.
The, the state regulation is one foot. We don't have that outlined in the overlay, like one way or the other, but our ordinance would be implied to follow one, plus one.
Okay. I understand what you're saying. And then I would also add one more condition, that any ground equipment, like cooling systems or generating or noise-emitting equipment, that there be 300 feet away or screened by the buildings themselves against those residential properties or parcels with a residence on them.
Louz, can we make sure that the setback is a wooded setback? In, in the first condition that you stated?
The 200-foot buffer.
Or buffer, yeah.
Is it one?
Wouldn't the buffer be wooded, based on how, where it's defined in the ordinance? It's already, yeah.
I just wanted to make sure that I was still included.
No, that was a great question.
Yeah.
Let me make sure the, I think the proposed motions was broken down into multiple, the rezoning and the annexation separately. Because this isn't the actual approval, I think you could actually move to, it sounds like you're moving to approve both applications.
Yes.
And both, both annexations and the rezoning request for all the parcels involved in this application.
With the conditions.
With the conditions you outlined.
Yes.
Plus the conditions that staff recommended.
Yes. That's the motion I'm making.
Can we also condition, like, can we require them to come back to us with the water, with the traffic, with the environmental impact information?
That's going to go to council, I think.
Could I add to that? The flood analysis is going to be required for the site plan based on the, the land including the section of the high-risk flood. I, I read if any, if there, it doesn't matter to what extent it's included in the property, any requires that study to be performed. So that would be included, but I think that's a valid question about each of the items you listed. I think I agree with that. If they can, come back to us.
So environmental, or site plan, environmental, floodplain, traffic, what else do I have written down? Water, sewer, infrastructure.
We've got a motion, so she has to agree to add those to the motions. I don't think we can put a condition that they come back before planning and zoning. We, it is, it does go, you know, their site plans do go back before a committee, and it's made up of engineers and other professionals. If you gave me a hydrology study, I wouldn't know what I was looking at. You may, but there, there's professionals that look at those things.
Right, there's already people that approve those things beyond us. That's why there's multiple boards and committees and permitting processes. So do I need to restate this motion again? Okay, all right. I'm going to make a motion to approve both the rezoning request for parcel ID 1680090 Hickory, Hickory Level Road, and parcel ID 16901202664 South Van Wert Road, and the annexation request for parcel ID 1680090 Hickory Level Road, and parcel ID 16901202664 South Van Wert Road, and the recommended parcel split of parcel ID 16901202664 South Van Wert, which would allow the residents in the amended, identified survey to remain within Carroll County, under the conditions that there would be a two-hundred-foot buffer between any residential properties or parcels that contain a residence on the property, as well as in addition, a three-hundred-foot buffer if there's ground equipment such as generators, noise-emitting devices, cooling systems, or they must be screened by the data center building. Also, an addition of two feet above the floodplain. And I think that was all of it. Did I capture everything we wanted in the motion?
In addition to the staff recommended-
Thank you. In addition to the staff recommendations that were presented by Ms. DeSanto during her presentation. So that's my motion. Anyone willing to second it? Yeah. Can I ask a question? I heard a citizen talk, infrastructure. I would just like to hear one minute of what would make people feel better about infrastructure as a condition. Please come up to the podium so people can hear it. I just, I just want to give them the opportunity to be heard so that we didn't miss anything.
Sure, my name is Paul Cutler, 27 Hickory Glen. So, infrastructure, you're looking at roadways. When you look at South Van Wert, there's some culverts under the roads they have washed out in the past. If you look at the signs on South Van Wert, no vehicles over six wheels. So occasionally there is a cement truck, dump truck is an example. They're going to deliver concrete, I understand that. But by gosh, like I said, this thing's not a mushroom. It's not going to come up out of the ground by itself. Then you get into the water. It's a mass balance. Doesn't matter whether you bring in one million, two million gallons a day, you got to get rid of it. You got the sewer treatment plant, it's on North Van Wert, which is across the interstate, Highway 78. You got to get permits from the railroad, not just one permit, you got to, you're dealing with the federal government now because you've got Amtrak. They use that railroad. They may not have that in Cartersville, but they got Amtrak coming through here. There's the plantation pipeline. Those guys get very sensitive about anybody doing any digging on their property. You got permit issues. So this thing's going to go on for six, seven years. They may want to bring the sewer treatment plant through that, they may get the permits, but now you're disturbing Highway, uh, South Van Wert Road, and we all, that is how we exit out of our communities into, uh, you know, to get into Villarica. And we shop in Villarica, we buy in Villarica. Understand money, uh, I think people are chasing money, but when you sign up and you tell somebody you're going to, you're going to work with them on a, a development plan, and you don't know what you're signing on that contract, these lawyers have a way of bending you over. And they will bend you over. Pardon my French, but that is infrastructure. And you get into a lot of different things, so. Uh, I hear floodplain, but we, we still haven't addressed the wetlands. There's some issues there. And who's on the hook for the money? And it's not unusual. I've spent, I spent forty-five years of my career going into industrial parks. Go out and benchmark, Georgia has a hundred-and-fifty-nine counties, most of them have industrial parks, and most of them don't have, they're, they're not dumping it on eleven or twelve subdivisions. And I don't think the roads can, it doesn't matter whether you got twelve or fifteen people working there or what. Now, I hear another number, nine-hundred-and-fifty houses, doesn't matter whether it's nine-hundred-and-fifty. When you start looking at those floodplains and all that, and you look at those tributaries and the wetlands, I don't even think you can get two-hundred-and-fifty, three-hundred houses on there. Now you've got to get soil to perk, okay? I've got two lots, I'm in Oak Place. There's two lots directly behind me, they don't perk. So a lot of people, they're dealing with some hydraulic things right here. You say, oh, we're going to have nine-hundred-and-fifty houses? I challenge that. And the reason why I challenge that is, if the land doesn't perk, you're not going to put a house on it. And with those floodplains and everything else, you, you may say, I've got nine-hundred lots, but you may only get three-hundred houses on it. I'm not opposed to building and development. I made a career doing that, going into industrial parks. But I'll say this, and I've been in them in North America, Asia, Europe, nobody dumps an industrial park in a residential community. Hundred-and-fifty-nine counties in Georgia, go out and benchmark, they don't do that. That is why the community's so upset.
We have two already.
Pardon?
We have two already.
Yeah, I know. You, you've got one with fifty acres, but he, here it is, even if you get, get the treatment line across the interstate and everything else, you either got to go under it or over it. Even if, that treatment plant on North, North Van Wert, it's not going to handle a half-a-million gallons of additional sewage. If you build houses on South Van Wert, they're going to be like the rest of the houses on South Van Wert, with the exception of Charleston Place, they're going to be on septic tanks, okay? You don't have to do that. Just wait till you go through rock, I mean, there's a lot of granite out there. I call it Stone Mountain West, is what I call it. So it's there. And there's a lot of stuff that you may say I'm going to build on it. It's very easy to sign a contract, once that ink's dry, the lawyers have you, okay? Nothing against your profession. I am an engineer, I do know what I'm talking about.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
We, we just allowed-
Yeah.
Significant a time beyond-
Yeah.
What we initially announced we were going to allow. So I, I think out of abundance of caution to make sure we are following the zoning procedures act, we have to give an opportunity to the applicant-
Thank you, Kevin.
-to address these things at this point.
Thank you. Why are we looking at this property and not at an industrial park? That's a fair question. In order for a data center to happen, you have to have several things, but the two primary things you have to have is transmission line, not a distribution line. It's not the same lines that run to your house or to your office. You have to have a transmission line from a power company that can transmit a tremendous amount of, of electricity. This property has it. The other thing you have to have is fiber. You have to have fiber that can transmit a tremendous amount of information. There are very few industrially-zoned properties that have that. It's very rare. It's very rare to have both those things. And normally, if you do have that, you're not in a spot where the property is big enough to house a data center-type development, doesn't have the space to do it. It's very, very rare. That property has it. That's why it's desirable for that purpose. That's why it's a great use for that property. Now, as to concerns about infrastructure and wetlands and environmental concerns and water and sewer, they're, they're all valid concerns. All of that has to be addressed. It's going to cost hundreds of thousands of dollars to do that. And no one is going to do that unless they know that if they can do that, and it works out, they will be able to do the project that they wish to do. That's, that's mandatory. Now, you don't want to give anybody a, a free pass to go build whatever they want to do. I do more zoning for local governments than I do for private citizens or private developers, and I know you don't want to give a free pass. You don't have to give a free pass, you're not being asked to give a free pass here. This project will not go forward without a development agreement that it's going to have to be prepared by your staff, your administration, your city attorney, and it's going to have to be approved by your city council. If that doesn't happen, no data center will happen.
Right.
So I don't think it's a legitimate to say, we can't move forward yet until we know all these things. We'll have to know all of those things, but in due course. But we're just at zoning right now. There's no site plan approval here, there's no building permit that's coming anytime soon. This is just step one in what will be a fairly long process. And you've got a staff that's good. I work in a lot of jurisdictions that don't. You, you've got a staff that knows what they're doing, you've got a professional staff to review all that, and that's when that'll happen.
I appreciate that, I agree. I would say sort of the, the slight disconnect is just that to make, the reason we ask for so much information is to make a decision based on the comprehensive plan. Having more information is beneficial.
Sure.
Obviously, there's no investment unless that, you know that a property can be developed. So I understand both sides. I would say, I would second that, but I would have to have some, that, I, I don't know to what extent we have to do a traffic analysis, and I'm not really comfortable doing that unless, unless we add that in.
I am.
Unless, unless it's required to be done.
Can, can I send you the DRI that was done previously? There was a traffic study done when it was-
There was already.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And, and it did have, I mean, it, again, different project, different, different things they're looking at. It was based on the, the future use of, you know, whether it was three-hundred homes or eight-hundred homes at the time. There was a traffic study done. It would just be completely different for this project.
You know, I, we'll, we have no trouble doing a traffic study. That's something that we would expect to do as we got to the process, once we know what kind of, what kind of buildings we're looking at. What I will tell you is, I'll tell you, I've seen a bunch of them, what they show, virtually no traffic.
Yeah.
It doesn't generate much traffic.
So I will add to my motion a condition that a traffic study must be completed by the applicant, and then I would ask if anybody would second my motion.
Yeah, I'll second it.
All in favor?
For, for context, the, the Douglas County Moratorium, they cited, one of the main things was traffic. So I've heard that there's not a great traffic impact, but then anecdotally I see like, things like that. So I just want, I think having that information is beneficial.
Yeah, no, I think, I appreciate that.
Would anyone like to make a motion to dismiss?
I'll make a motion to dismiss the meeting.
I'll second.
All in favor?